One o'clock. When we had recessed, we were at the... We were getting done with a three-minute presentation going into next would be calling for the approval or disapproval from the Revenue Chair. So at this time, we're calling for approval or disapproval. For organizers, Chairman of the Revenue Committee, Senator Golda.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, uh, Executive Branch Officers, members of the body. At this time, we had a committee meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-ninth. Uh, we called the meeting at one P M. Uh, the invocation was given by Senator Pat Alden. And they were actually nine members present at that time. Senator Manu Kovarsup, Senator Kyle DiRoni, Senator Swart, Senator Alden, Senator Will Bird, Senator Not Afraid, the Pickhorns, Senator Kenny Shane, Senator Not Afraid, La Jolla Grass, and myself. And so that we discussed the breakdown of the two point five million at the time. And at that time, the vote was consensus of the vote was eight yes, zero no, zero today. So that was the consensus of the, uh, committee meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-ninth, uh, to approve this, uh, two point five million at today's, uh, special session of, uh, February first, two thousand twenty thirteen. So I'm gonna get back over the floor to you, Mr. Speaker. And I believe there's gonna be some changes I'd like to add, uh, when we come to amendments.
Okay, so you recommend approval at this time?
Yes.
Okay, approval has been recommended by Chairman of the Revenue Committee. So that takes us to the debate. Any debate, one once, one twice, any debate. If not, that takes us right into amendments. Floor is now open for amendments. The floor organized, Senator Golda.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I believe I'm gonna walk over to the, uh, Eraser Board here. And these will be the amendments, uh, agreed upon as follows. Uh, that I make a motion, this is in form of a motion to the amendments. One million will go to the Executive Branch General Fund. Five hundred thousand will go to the land purchase program. And then four hundred K, four hundred thousand will be divided equally between the elders' emergency fund of two hundred thousand and another two hundred thousand will go to the head start new building and maintenance needs for a total of four hundred thousand. And hundred and fifty thousand will go to the six districts, equal payments to six districts of twenty-five thousand. And a hundred thousand to the legislature for travel and for, uh, computer updates, I T technology. Hundred thousand to the judicial, uh, branch for their building needs and I believe for I T technician and the other, uh, needs that they mentioned earlier. And that's a total of two point, two point two five million in total. So I made it in form of a motion.
We have that in motion. We have a second by Senator Stewart.
Question.
Question by Senator Not Afraid of the La Jolla Grass District. At this time, all senators who are in favor of these amendments, raise your right hand. Fifteen. All those opposed. All those abstained. Motion for amendment carries with a vote of fifteen yes, zero no, zero abstained. That brings us to the second reading. The floor organized, Senator Golda.
Mr. Speaker, Secretary, Executive Branch members, members of the body. I'd like to, uh, waive the second reading with amendments as agreed upon and go to a final roll call vote.
Second by the motion to waive with amendments. Second by Senator Stewart. Question by Senator Alden. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Fifteen, all those opposed. All those abstained. Motion carries with a vote of fifteen yes, zero no, zero abstained. That brings us for the final roll call vote. On this amendments as stated, just go on the board. Now everyone, uh, we filled in the blanks on the red line version. It was approved by the body for the amendments. Final roll call vote is on the passage of this budget modification with amendments. You have the red line version in front of you, so before you vote, you have your information. At this time, we'll call for roll call vote, starting with Senator Tulagans.
Tulagans, Tulagans, black lodge, yes.
Pretty paid, black lodge, yes.
Uh, I gotta ask a question, a third one real quick before I make my vote. There's a subsection C in, uh, in, um, beneath, and now therefore being resolved. And I'm gonna be dwelling with that separately because it's part of the, the, the overall appropriation.
The, yes, uh, when we were in committee, the one point five million, the committee agreed with the executive that we will not discuss this until that one point five million is received.
Okay, I'll hold it for Speaker. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay, thank you.
So in that way, we, we will visit this when it is received. Stewart, black lodge, yes.
Byop, Reno, yes. Not Afraid, Oshkosh, yes.
Oshkosh, yes.
Alden, Big Horn, yes.
Not Afraid, yes.
Deep Green, Alprin, yes.
Golda, Bopfo, yes.
Will Bird, Mariview, yes.
Maxfo, Mariview, yes.
Volker, yes.
Volker, yes.
Shane, Reno, yes. With a vote of fifteen, yes, zero no, zero abstained as reported by Secretary of the House. This bill passes. For organizes Chairman Exec of the Executive Branch, Daniel Cowell.
A whole lot because we're, uh, passing this two point two five, um, I think it's, uh, only right we come together, um, whenever new monies come in and, and look at the priorities and, uh, just we'll do that with the one point five and the seventy-five thousand for education and I believe, uh, uh, committee chair for education can get with, um, our education department and maybe the college and come up with a plan for that seventy-five thousand for the next, for the four years. Um, and this one point five will, will budget, uh, when, when it comes in. But at this time, I got to run to a ballgame, Alby plays in La Jolla Grass and A J's boy plays in Busby and Tom's birthday.
Happy birthday.
The floor organized, the floor organized Senator Alden, the Big One District.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. Just comment before we go break here, I'd like to thank Executive Branch for, first of all, coming over and I think it's, I've mentioned earlier that it's probably one of the first times issue that they've actually come over to appropriate some new ones. And, uh, we're getting together and we're giving our priorities, uh, what we need. So I'd just like to mention, thank them for coming over and all the senators for working together and hopefully we can keep doing this in the future so we can keep moving forward.
Hope. The floor organized Senator Golda.
Uh, I'd like to thank, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to thank the Executive Branch for working, uh, with, uh, just like Senator Alden said, and also for the committee members, uh, for, uh, coming to the meetings and, uh, getting this done in committee. And thank you, Jay, and Bill for your input. Also, you know, just thank that we are on the right path, working relationship and we need to continue this. You know, thirteen thousand, over thirteen thousand crores are depending on you and I to give them a better future. And so I believe we're on our way there, so hope.
The floor organized Senator Not Afraid of the La Jolla Grass District.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. And Chigalaga, Abzalogen. It's encouraging to see that all branches have come together to amend the budget. I believe it's the finest example of cooperation that I've ever seen. And my hope for the future is that as this cooperation continues, the services will continue to improve for and on behalf of the Abzalogen people. These action would have figured that Chigakshu, Bahooma, Wada, Ywachil, hope.
The floor organizes the representative for the Judicial Branch, Court Administrator, Bertina Murray.
I'd like to thank the Executive and Legislative Branch in helping us meet some of our needs. Uh-huh.
Thank you. As you've all witnessed today, we've had three branches come together. And the, a nation is only as strong as its government, so we've got a strong government today. The floor organizes Vice Secretary of the Executive Branch, Sean Backwell.
Thank you, Speaker, Secretary, uh, members of the body of the legislature. Uh, Chigalaga, and, uh, reported by, uh, Bill, as a vice secretary of the tribe. I've been, uh, working with A J on the, uh, primary elections and the general elections of our, our divisions over there. Good luck to Kenny and, uh, Lucille this weekend. And, uh, we're working on, uh, Boys and Girls Club, we'll be bringing that over, uh, with the earnings to make it a five oh one C three, uh, long arm of the government so we can, um, go forward with it. Uh, that's in the future. And, uh, working with the veterans programs, uh, new veterans, uh, Secretary, Veterans, uh, Chairman, uh, we working on the, um, what's the, the other secretary? The looking secretary. Boys and I Girls Club. And then, uh, the veteran program is, is, uh, is, is going at it full blast. We got a bus over there that's gonna be coming. We have an office over there. So in the future, uh, we want the veterans to, uh, uh, come to something good and help with their benefits. Uh, we have, uh, we found some monies for the flight pole. So very native days, I believe we're gonna present that flight pole. It's gonna be about three hundred feet and the flag is gonna be two hundred feet by two hundred feet co-flying. And it's gonna represent the commission. Thank you, and today's a good day to be a let's later, to be an executive. Uh, without your help, we wouldn't get this far. We know where we're going, the Ocal administration and good things are coming and it's, it's all good. So, uh, Bahooma, you know, Ba, uh, Ba Bad, Chugirish, Kalawo, Yoo Chugawo, Kalawo, Kalawo Goo. Chugirish, Chugirish, Kalawo, Yoo, Kalawo, Chudera after this. I invite you over to the Executive Branch, uh, Ba Wshu, my birthday, so first time member, so let's, let's feel like, Ba Wshu.
Thank you. Chairman, Executive Branch, Daniel Cowell.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, reporting from, uh, from my end, uh, the, um, last Monday, Tuesday, uh, actually Wednesday, we know, because we had a layover in Minneapolis, that, uh, again, Congressman Dean, so he's a pretty open-minded, pretty down-to-earth guy. I think we could utilize him, he's a natural resource committee, um, on the Congress side. And he's willing to, uh, work with us. And before Bieber was talking to a law, I got his name, he's a grilled guy, he's, uh, down-to-earth, he, he grew up with, uh, um, some crows and boles in it, going to school, walking to school with crows. And he said he's, uh, wants to help us, uh, that was a good sign. And then Bockis and Tester, uh, healthcare, IHS, I really wanna help us, uh, why in healthcare did we want them to do an investigation why, uh, the healthcare isn't too good here at Crow's, that they're gonna bring down the team to do the investigation here, uh, IHS, well. Then we have a new area director, which is, uh, Schweitzer Health Director, I look, Anna Whitey, Sarah, who's the, the new area director for IHS, so she's willing to help us. And again, I think it, um, the committee off with health. And then the rest of you that have an interest in, uh, IHS, yeah, we need to really push our, uh, our agenda on IHS side with Bockis and Tester. And then Tester, we, we thank him for extending the, the coal production tax credit. And then again, we need to start working on extending that for, for further into the future. And then on Tuesday, uh, we met with, uh, Shaka, kind of a meeting, uh, now phase two, again, it's not, um, set in stone with us. We're talking a hundred-room motel, um, you know, a bigger casino. And they're, they have a new chairman, so we wanted to go and meet, introduce ourselves and continue the talks because, uh, we are partners in that, the, the current casino. And then Wednesday, we went through the plans and we're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting on eleventh to twelfth, on the plans of the phase two. Uh, we have till March twelfth to, to submit our, our proposal to, for the phase two, which is a hundred-room motel. We'll bring the plans and we'll, we'll sit down with the gaming committee and before, before the eleventh, uh, twelfth meeting next week, the vote will, we'll go through that, those plans, that, um, their new chairman is, uh, optimistic, wants to work with us through the, uh, then Thursday, uh, myself, I was, uh, on a panel with, um, other, uh, leaders for Native Nations Institute Nation Building. Uh, I was, uh, presenting to new elected leaders of the whole Midwest and, uh, presentation they love to, at Bush Foundation and, uh, Harvard Project, everyone's that asked me to be on that panel, um, on nation building and what we're doing here, again, um, unity, working together, put out a, and then, uh, my experience as a leader, I have to share with, uh, a lot of those new elected leaders. And at the same time, we've got a land buyback, uh, cabal. And in two weeks, do we have, uh, the interior team on? And we're number four, um, of all the tribes, so we have the most fractionated, we're number four, and we're gonna be a pilot project, so we have to have our trucks and mortar when they get here, because, uh, it's a lot of money coming to us. And the, the more money you get, uh, fractionation, the more money you get in scholarship, so, uh, we got a, I think the land purchase program would be great for us because we need additional, um, uh, appraisers, we need additional people, we need, uh, then B I A who are retired, yeah, good, that have been working in acquiring land and disposal, and I do that, please to us too, so we can get money to come help us and program all, we, we need to really, but that doesn't address lands that are in, uh, P pat, and again, there's thirty-seven requests right now in P pat, and that's not fractionated, and that's P pat, and there are individuals that wanna sell their individual interests off, and it's, and I will address the land purchase, but if that, if that fractionation, that's a fail buyback, just looking at, again, with, uh, team, and I'll get a mix, next week, they're meeting in Rapid City, and, uh, crow's, or pilot project, we look up to, and we heard it from Bockis and Tester that we're gonna be a pilot project on this. And, uh, we have ten years to finish this, um, the land buyback, but, uh, we've recorded a baby look for the last two weeks, uh, D C and Minneapolis, last, this past couple of days.
Thank you. The floor organized Senator Kovarsup.
Hey, thank you, Speaker. My question is, uh, it's always been a question to everybody that, uh, we trust money, uh, you and, uh, our coal, you know, like, loophole is, uh, everybody, uh, takes money away from you, you give a little bit of money to social security. So, uh, these things are, need to be answered, so we need to find out, uh, that what is taxable and what's not, you know? Because we had somebody come from, uh, uh, I R S at one point to talk to us about what is taxable. We got some of the, uh, things that we kinda wanted to verify, verify at that time, but, uh, any kind of money that shakes around, uh, the United States is gonna have an eyeball. So what is, uh, really non-taxable? We have to find those things out, so that's one of the big issues, like, uh, everybody, gives a little money, they cut your pension. So it's those kinds of things that, uh, it's a reality. If they figure they're gonna survive, it's three hundred dollars, uh, every month, but it's not sold. Elderly give money, they get social security, but they finalize them because they got a bit of extra money. So we have to have secondality there to fight for our elders, because, uh, it's, uh, saying in the past that we have to paint who we are in our treaties and stuff to make sure that we stand on a nation, not in the business of the U S I R S. So that's the thing that we need to clarify, we need to be a court case, so be it, you know? So that's the thing that we have to clarify that issue, it's an important issue. So that's the thing that, uh, we never paint ourselves as it is so far, so we're gonna be what we are, hey?
Hope. Thank you. The floor organized Secretary of the Executive Branch, E J Not Afraid.
Thank you, Speaker. Secretary, let's leave the body. Uh, I'm gonna do a short, uh, hopefully one sentence report for the Vice Secretary, uh, for the Vice Chair, and then myself. Vice Chair is currently working on, uh, some projects at the University of Montana, uh, based on some social service program which involves rehabilitation and, and, uh, working with, um, other aspects of health. That was, that was his short narrative, uh, that we are aware of, and, uh, I believe he reported that last quarter. Now, with the Secretary of the Executive Office, uh, I was, uh, appointed by the Chairman to, um, visit the coal summit with, uh, Northwest Tribal Leaders in Seattle, Washington. My, my findings were, upon arriving, uh, we met with different, um, chairmans of different tribes, they have over forty-seven tribes, which I was not aware of, so it was an education process for me. Um, as we met various chairmans, they gave their input as to our coal coal going their way through their waterways such as the Columbia, and where we would stockpile our coal if it was to lead port. So, um, majority was opposition of our coal in that, in that endeavor. Uh, but as we sat at the table for the formal summit, um, the, the picture that was shown is that their treaty rights were being violated, not, not so much in the realm of Crow tribe violating, but the current activity that, uh, the coal chains are doing now. The coal chains now are, are, uh, I guess, the handling of the coal, whether it's, uh, stockpiled or chains being derailed is contaminating the waterways because to us, as we hunt for, uh, wildlife, them is, they're, they're fish eaters, and crows know that's fish eaters. So when they gave inventory of the types of, uh, fish that they harvest, not only for sale, but for consumption of their own livelihood, uh, it was a good educational process for me. But at the same time, uh, realized that, um, this nation to nation was a big benefit for us because little did they know that that was not our coal. So all, all this time, understanding that we struck a coal deal again, they felt that that was our coal going that way, so the doors were actually closed. And I have to give credit to Dal Dal for allowing that door open for us to, uh, attend the coal summit. We were invited to that coal summit last year, but there was no representation from the Crow. Because all together, you have the tribes and the environmentalists who oppose our opposition of, of, uh, coal being, uh, sent overseas from, from their particular ports and the coal being, uh, transported through their reservations and, and the waterways that, that they feel are within their treaty rights, because they still exert those. So as I, I gave a presentation of, uh, treaty rights, the Crow tribe does not want to infringe on any other tribe's treaty right, we, we respect that, just like we, we would want ours respected. And also, uh, said that we can work something out as to whether it be the handling or, uh, regulating of how coal is handled. Um, but we, we kept it short and at the same time, there was additional tribes there from Longstreams and, uh, Ute that actually spoke up for the Crow and said that Crow is a, is a good tribe to work with, so that was, that was in our favor. So among the summit, it first started out with mean grills, you know, like, they, what are these guys doing here, what's going on with the hell, why are they showing their faces? And then, uh, I didn't know, it was ambush. So Dal Dal kind of taps me on the shoulder and he's like, making it short and sweet because it's an ambush. And so, so we did, but during this whole educational process and slamming, because one of the ladies says, we don't want your coal coming through here, and signs, signs are in on the table. And I just sit there and I take it, you know? So as everybody's, you know, harping on us, we take it all in, and then as they start showing the statistics of how their, uh, fishing habitats are deteriorating because of coal, oil, and gas, because at these ports, there's been a lot of mishandling, where, um, an example is, two weeks ago, there was a ship that has a conveyor that loads another ship. And then as a, as a small, uh, boat comes and hits that, that ship with a conveyor, it moves it to where, you know, that conveyor, conveyor with coal on it is just dumping into the ocean. So, you know, things like that ruins the habitat of, of their species and their traditional, um, diet. So, you know, we can respect that as crows, we hate that for, for our elk and deer and so forth. But I emphasized again that, you know, we're willing to work something out. And later on, come to find out that there was various tribes that wanted to come to the table afterward to have port space for us. So that was, uh, that was a good outcome of us sitting through that and at the same time letting, letting them know that their casinos to them, which generate millions, hundred millions, thirty, three hundred million in one year, their casinos to them is our coal to us. And I said, that's your heart of the revenue, so our coal is our heart of our revenue, but we're just a speck considering the whole formation of this Powder River Basin. I said, we're, even though we're, we're big in Montana, overall, the, the coal deposit itself from Wyoming makes us small time, so, and that's the coal that's being shipped through them, uh, through, um, different companies, that's, you know, more research for me to work on. Uh, but leaving there, we left an imprint for inviting the, uh, government to visit their fisheries and so forth, but the same, we've, we've asked for that in return, that they come and visit us and view the mine and view our. mine and view our lands. One other example is, Mr. Not Afraid, you say, our little 2.2 million, we only have twenty-two hundred. And he said, well, the reason why I say our little 2.2 is because your twenty-two hundred is a praise that, you know, maybe a billion at least. Whereas our 2.2 million is anywhere from a hundred dollars an acre to two hundred dollars an acre. A lot of them are like, hey, I think I'll put them on ten and buy land. But the point is, you know, our resources and our different types of capital in comparison to them, they're rich in different areas, but we're rich in different areas. And our population is a lot more than their population. And so as we were comparing and contrasting, we got the hint that we are trying to produce for our people, not to become rich and step on another tribe just to sell our coal. So we have a demand, we have a need for our people too. So as we brought that across to them, it turned out pretty good. And then it took along with us a finance manager, in case there was anything in the realm of numbers. And the finance gentleman says, which kind of helped during this timeframe of us getting grilled on was that they still obtain their right of voice, whereas us with the railroad, you know, pretty much no say. So that was kind of a compliment to the tribes there for retaining that. And so they then, at that specific time, they realized that they don't get treated any better than we do. They don't, we have a lot of similarities in the realm of producing, in the realm of getting a hit. They just were fortunate to have the casino as their main source of revenue. Okay, and then I'll move on to the tribal leaders. So the Seattle trip was Sunday, the coal was Sunday, and that presentation was maybe hour and a half, two hours. Then we flew back in on Monday. So the following day was Tuesday, went to the tribal leaders, Chairman O'Koyle, had a, there was a list of vacancies for the Wyoming Tribal Leaders Association up there. And the chairman nominated myself, Vice Secretary Backbone, and himself to these various committees. And these committees, you can find online, the main committees that Vice Secretary and Chairman were on were IHS Budget, IHS Oversight, and Advisory. And the chairman himself was on the Director of HHS Advisory. So that's a good committee to be on. Along these, this Montana, Wyoming tribal leaders meetings, I found that they had a speaker who was a representative from Governor Bullock's office. The handout that I had your secretary, or your office here printed out for you, you can find is, the state of Montana was working on a bill that is revising the Bison Management Laws. And that, what that did does is, it establishes a year-round hunting season, increasing the number of available license prohibiting the transfer, relocation, or transplantation of well buffalo, granting rulemaking authority and amendments. And as we went through it, this does not govern us, I understand. At the same time, if we wanted to work a nation-to-nation deal with, we use Flathead or we use Fort Peck. This bill here eliminates that by the transportation of buffalo. And so I asked, if, being new to this association, I asked my neighbor who was Northern Cheyenne to write me a ask if he can have someone propose a motion to ask the governor to veto that. And it passed and it carried, so Mayor Tribal Leader is working on that. So that's a good deal. But I thought I'd share that with you, because they're always working on buffalo, the state of Montana. Anything that they could do to eliminate buffalo, they would love to do that. The next thing I'd like to share is, it's just in the works. We're looking at relocating some buffalo to the Great Vine area. It's just propositions. We're studying, the reason why we think that would be an ideal spot is because of the natural terrain. So you have less fencing, you have less expenses to it, there's already existing roads going on. There is currently a camp up there that the tribe owns, it's more like a ship. And then the tribe owns a lot of lands. This area has always been a conflict for crows who fight over the those tribal tracts back there. At the same time, I feel that by the tribe relocating, then you have a twelve-month-a-year access to your buffalo. Not of all, but again, just a proposal. So we spoke with the Simians, and we also spoke with Passes, and we're previous folks who leased a lot of that tribal land back there. And so far, it's going in good way. And until we actually sit down with numbers, then we'll know the particulars. But as we go through the proposal, the proposal is that Simeon would act as a, whether it be a partnership, because they currently own buffalo in that area, and the tribe would like to expand its herd and market its herd if we can. And at the same time, we would still have buffalo where they currently are now. But this pilot project would show the chances of, the potential of revenue on the market itself, including the Indian casinos, because while we were in Seattle, there were interest in buffalo meat. So, you know, it's just, again, just projects that we're working on, that we can't say we're not doing anything at all. So we're trying to maximize our assets for a return. Okay, move on to the last here, get pretty winded. The last piece of information that I passed out to you folks is kind of a schedule of the breakdown of the Indian land consolidation. And I spoke with OST on Wednesday. And just to reiterate, the Chairman, number four, being number four in the nation, we have a total of five tribes in Rocky Mountain that rank top ten in the nation. Crowe itself, the estimated initial purchase ceiling is one hundred and three million for this undivided interest purchase through Crowe. So of that, they, if the tribe administered that transaction of purchasing those undivided interests, they would allocate us twenty-four million. So again, to give more particulars, that twenty-four million, does that include the surveys? Does that include the appraisals and so forth? Does that include the administration of purchasing these lands? And the OST gentleman said, yes, but let me get back to you. So that's good. So as we pass this budget to initiate that, yeah, we are a bona fide, we're a land purchasing program, this sets some stability there. Instead of saying, yeah, we want it, we want it. And then they're like, well, let's take a look at your office, and we visit, and we go through your policies and procedures. And so the ball, the ball has to get rolling here, because by the time it gets here, and that pilot is ready, we have to be ready for it. Yeah, I just thought I'd share those numbers for you and what we've been working on with the executive, and you haven't been really kicking back watching football.
Oh, thank you. Just one quick note, at the President's inaugural dinner banquet, we had the choice between lobster or buffalo. Buffalo steak. On the news the other days, they had stated that eighty-eight percent of the people had chosen buffalo. So there isn't, there's, people are wanting to eat buffalo. For organized Senator Stewart.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, you know, I appreciate the updates and where we are with these different ventures. And I wanted to, and that last note there, I myself have thought it very important that we establish a land acquisition program, and whether, you know, I think it should be a separate, than the land lease ordinance. I want to, you know, request the Secretary and Chairman and Vice Secretary to get their cooperation on that. I know we're strapped for legal counsel over there, but we need to get this going. The land acquisition program is something that I think everybody needs. You know, we don't have the training that a lot of people do when it comes to purchasing land, because we never purchased land. It seems like, you know, but it'd be nice for, you know, as Secretary of the Surface Land Committee, I want to make that request, that we get something moving, whether it be my special session, or if you want to wait till April session. But I'd like to try to see if we can get a land acquisition program that's going to be fitting for, you know, all areas, whether it be fear, trust. The other thing too, is I want to applaud everyone's efforts for, you know, getting that port space going. Before Mr. Chairman leaves here, I want to ask the question, when are we going to talk about separation of budgets in this court case? And if so, we should, like I said, sign a medium or, you know, just to get the ball rolling here. I know they're busy, but we can kind of get something moving.
I feel head back over and look at the schedule for next week. Still, I think it'd be within the end of the month, we've already talked about a kind of a retreat from my gang over to kind of catch up on things, and then we could probably have a sit-down with you guys at the site from here, kind of go through, kind of a whole breakdown of what we're doing, and then we can talk about it then, because kind of schedule it in like next week, week after, we're too busy, we're running. That's why AJ's going one way, and Chong's going another way, and myself, we're trying to sort of tend to that, but we're getting things done. I think it'd be beneficial, all of us sat down with the mutual site and go through the whole work phase. Right now, I think we've asked for continuing some, I'd like to sit down and talk about it. Not a session or anything, but a site, sit down and have a retreat and go through the work. Make sure all of us on the same page.
Thank you. Well, that takes us into our next thing, which will be next on the agenda, is other business at this time for organized Senator Stewart. Black Lives Matter.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, members of the body and executive officials, I wanted to make a motion to amend the budget. By when the general. To include the resolution of the Crowe Tribe Legislature to confirm Marvin L. Stewart to the position of Director as the Crowe Co. Director Office. Mr. Speaker.
All right, we have a motion to amend the agenda, to include an LR. Do we have a second? Second by Senator Not Afraid of the Lodgegrass District. Do we have a question? Question by Senator Coverzo of the Lodgegrass District. All those in favor of amending the budget to add this LR to the agenda, amending the budget, excuse me, I have, I'm being subtle on that. Amending the agenda to add this LR to the agenda. Raise your right hand. Sixteen?
Probably fifteen.
Fifteen. Correction, fifteen stated by Secretary of the House. Any opposed? One opposed. One opposed by?
Fourteen.
Yeah, corrected, I stand corrected. With a total vote of fourteen, yes. One, no. Zero abstaining. That allows us to add the LR to the agenda of for organized Senator Stewart at this time.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, members, Secretary, I just want to mention that we got the, we've got a process in doing so on the confirmation process here, but we want to make a suggestion to the body to suspend the rules at this time and bring this to the floor, and then after, whether it be a proponent or in debate, most likely ask these questions, and then go from there. So at that time, with guidance from the legal counsel, how do we approach this? Can we just get a motion? What do you think? Where's the House Counsel?
I don't know.
You want to eat?
Cool, eat that.
Tell them we're meeting and we should be in here all the time.
At this time, was the process? At this time, in House Counsel, Senator Stewart is asking for you to explain, he wants to introduce this LR on the floor. And I believe, what was your quick word, Senator Stewart?
Oh, Mr. Speaker, the legislative resolution has been adopted to the agenda by motion. Now, I wanted to ask a clarification from the legal counsel on the process of basically getting this written to record and proceeding with the confirmation of this position.
For organized Senate House Counsel Jares.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the legislature. It's a good question, because with, it's an issue to the agenda, it can be discussed without acting upon, without following rule thirty-one's confirmation procedure, which obviously requires a confirmation hearing before the appropriate committee, with the nominee under oath testifying to the committee, very similar to adhering the process established by the US Senate for confirmations of judges and executive officers. However, this rule, like the other rules contained in our House rules, are all subject to suspension by majority vote legislature pursuant to Rule Twenty-Five. So the process would be for a senator to make the motion to suspend the application of Rule Thirty-One for the specific period of time of this legislative session for the specific purpose of the body entertaining this proposed legislative resolution. So if that motion were to carry, then the body would be at liberty to discuss the LR, including its passage, without going through the process of Rule Thirty-One.
For organized Secretary of the House.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. This legislation here, I didn't receive until a few days ago, Senator Stewart, I received it from him, and it was addressed to the Speaker and myself, and CC to the other senators. But that's why the situation occurred to where we didn't have a distribution to a committee, but it would fall under Natural Resources or Interest Tracks Committee, which is, Senator Stewart is the Chair of. So therefore, we just kind of threw it in his ball court, and that's why there was no hearing on this matter, just as a brief history of it, that's why this occurred. But we felt like it was important enough, and we felt the person was qualified enough to be confirmed through this process that the legal office has stated. Thank you.
So at this time, we are in need of a motion to suspend Rule Thirty-One in order to proceed. So at this time, we are in need, in need of a motion to suspend Rule thirty-one in order to proceed. For organized Senator Not Afraid of the Lodge Grass District.
Mister, thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. I'll make that motion.
A motion to suspend Rule thirty-one by Senator Not Afraid. Point of order by Senator Goza. For organized Senator Goza.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. My point is that we've got to make the, suspend the rules. You've got to specify how long and for.
At this time, for organized Senator Not Afraid to answer to the point of order.
I believe, miss, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I believe answering to the point of order is your call as speaker. With due respect to the Senator from, um, Aludanra, I believe that this has already been encompassed in the motion because you called for the motion and then you added the time constraint to it. And I was just recognizing your statement as stated a little earlier. It did include the timer strength for only for this occasion. Thank you.
Thank you. So as I had stated earlier, in order for us to proceed on this LR, we needed a motion to suspend Rule thirty-one before we could go any further to address this LR, which is the confirmation LR for Mr. Stewart. So, uh, Mr. Goza, Senator Goza, are you okay with that? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to suspend Rule thirty-one for this LR pertaining to the confirmation of Mr. Stewart. Do we have a second? Second by Senator Two Legons. You have a question? Question by Senator Stewart. All those in favor of suspending Rule thirty-one and to address the LR of confirmation for Mr. Stewart, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion carries with a vote of thirteen, yes. One opposed and zero abstaining. So that allows us to proceed with suspending Rule thirty-one so we can entertain this LR. At this time, the floor recognizes Senator Stewart.
All right, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, members. February first, twenty thirteen, Special Session of the Crow Tribe Legislature LR number thirteen dash, introduced by Senator Conrad J. Stewart, Black Lodge District, a legislative resolution titled, "A Resolution of the Crow Tribe Legislature to Confirm Marvin L. Stewart to the Position of Director of the Crow Coal Regulatory Office." Mr. Speaker.
Calling for a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Senator Two Legons.
Second.
Second by Senator Not Afraid of the Lodge Grass District. Go ahead and proceed, Senator Stewart.
All right, Mr. Speaker, legislative findings, whereas the Crow Tribe Legislature here and after legislature has the power and duty under Article five, section two, eight, two thousand and one Crow Constitution to promulgate and adopt resolutions in accordance with the Constitution and federal laws for the governance of the Crow Tribe of Indians. And whereas the Federal Surface Mine Control Reclamation Act of nineteen seventy-seven, SMACRA, Public Law ninety-five dash eighty-seven, as amended and codified in Title thirty of the United States Code, specifically authorized the, the Crow Tribe of Indians to attain primacy to become the lead regulator of surface coal mining and reg, reclamation of the Crow Indian Reservation. And whereas through passage of CLB ten dash oh-three, legislature adopted the Crow Coal Mining and Reclamation Code, which is to be submitted to the Secretary of Interior for review and approval as required by SMACRA. And whereas section two thousand, two, two hundred and one of the Crow Coal Mining and Reclamation Code establishes the Crow Coal Regulatory Office here and after CCRO, which is an independent regulatory agency of the Crow Tribal Executive Branch headed by a director with administrative rulemaking and a due to authority who shall be nominated by the Crow Tribal Chairman and confirmed by a majority of the legislature. And whereas on January fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, Tribal Chairman Darren O'Count officially submitted a letter to the Secretary of Legislature nominating Marvin L. Stewart to the position of Director of the CCRO. And whereas Marvin L. Stewart has a long and distinguished career in service of the Crow Tribe in areas of tribal mineral development, land services, reclamation, and legislature recognizes all qualifications of the Director of the Crow Coal Regulatory Office as established by federal law and Crow Tribal Law as fully satisfied by Mr. Stewart. Now therefore, being hereby enacted by the Crow Tribal Legislature in Special Session that pursuant to the Crow Coal Mining and Regulatory Code, Marvin L. Stewart is duly confirmed as the Director of the Crow Coal Regulatory Office and shall exercise all duties and authorities in accordance with all applicable federal and Crow Tribal Law upon approval of the Crow Coal Mining and Reclamation Code by the Secretary of the Interior, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. That brings us to the thirty minute presentation. We are now in thirty minute presentation.
All right, Mr. Speaker and Secretary, members of the body. At this time, I wanted to, um, you know, just, just before, you know, this, we, we passed, we passed an amendment to this budget that was, was basically something positive that we haven't seen for quite some time. Now, upon getting confirmations of these cabinet hits, I believe we've got the, the, the idea across to the executive branch that that too is a necessary need and that it's going to be coming forth soon. This is just one, one of many confirmations that are going to be coming forward that I believe we should get moving on. And it was told to me that, you know, right now, we are in the lead ahead of the Navajo Nation concerning the primacy program with the regulation of our own coal. Now that's regulation of the enforcement and the liability goes to Uncle Sam. But we have enforcement and permitting of this, um, primacy program. And so this is something that we're taking, we're assuming and taking from the OSM. But yet, we're not severing our trust through our treaty rights. But we're enhancing our sovereignty. And by doing so, this legislative branch has full authority through your constitution to give Mr. Marvin Stewart the confirmation to regulate and look after those areas as far as enforcement and permitting of our coal. Now I think this is something that, you know, a lot of us, uh, we don't take lightly, but it's, um, something that we don't really, it's not as exciting as money, you know? But coal turns into money. And in order to do so, we have to be in a position to regulate these areas. Too long, too long and too far have we, we allowed non-members to regulate the resources that we continue to brag about year to year, day to day. And I think that, that, that era has stopped. And there has been an awakening to where we can allow our qualified members that are amongst us here today to be in these positions to regulate and enforce for the Crow Peoples' benefit and advancement and protection. Not to say that these other agencies didn't do such a thing, but I think it's better that Crow looks after Crow interests. And so we have more state, more jurisdiction. Our, our thoughts, our good ideas, and some of our complaints will be heard on a local level and will be applied and even recognized on the federal level. So this here is something that's going to be, this is only the second confirmation. Right now, the standing confirmed Director of the CCRO is your Pro Executive Secretary, A.J. Not Afraid. And so at this time, Chairman O'Count has nominated Mr. Marvin Stewart to move in that area. And Marvin has been in these positions and in these, he had, he has, well, he has knowledge of these court cases. He has knowledge of what OSM is doing. He's been in the area of the abandoned mine lands. And so all these regulations, laws, and the ability to enforce his knowledge that he wears under his hat. And this is something that is brought before you today to fulfill this position. So I'm asking you that you give an update on your confirmation. And Mr. Speaker, Secretary, members, at the appropriate time on the agenda, I'd open up the questions for Mr. Marvin Stewart. But at this time, I believe we're still in performance states. But I, I, um, conclude that.
All right, we are still in the thirty minute presentation. One once. Going twice. Before I go on to the third call, just, uh, remind you that we had voted on this LR to waive, to suspend Rule thirty-one. So if there's any questions for Mr. Stewart, I believe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but by waiving, suspending Rule thirty-one, we don't question him now because we're confirming him today. Am I correct, Secretary? Is that how you would view it as well?
Yes, unless you under break the recess and have a committee meeting, will that route too as an option.
For organized Senator Stewart.
Yeah, I believe the rules are suspended. So regardless of it be a committee meeting, we could have broke before we made it suspended. So I think, um, being that the, the rules are suspended now, there's really no rules. So whether, how we do it, whether we bring Mr. Stewart to the front and openly ask him questions on his thoughts, goals, process, whatever, I think at this time it would be more fitting.
All right. What did I ask? Yeah, Sergeant Darms.
You suspended Rule thirty-one, how's rule? How you have to come by about the third call here?
Well, at this time, that's what I was trying to get confirmation on is that we suspended Rule thirty-one. So I believe there is no time for questions and answers because on what I have to follow here is we go through thirty minute presentation. Actually, we get done with thirty minute presentation. And then we go on to recommendation of the chairman to be here committee. And then for approval or disapproval, then we go on to the next one to be debated. And then on to final call vote after that. So at this time, we're still in thirty minute presentation. Okay, that, I was on my third call, so we'll go on to, that's the third call. So now at this time, the Speaker of the House will call for approval or disapproval for confirmation of Mr. Stewart. So for organized Senator Stewart, Chairman of the Natural Resources Committee. All right, Mr. Speaker.
We can go to the point of order here.
For organized Senator Goza.
My point of order is that I have to, uh, disagree with our parliamentarian. That piece of paper that you just read is actually, is taken from our rules. Put in place because that's what I, I, when, when I sat down with, uh, when I sat down with, it all spells, it's all in there. And that's what we used. We copied Frida, Frida, she was here. This is, I said Frida, you know the rules. And I said, I kind of, so I drafted out and that's what I wrote. And then Frida went to our rules and everything in our rules, the suspensions and everything is all in there. You know, the presentations, the thirty minute presentation, it's all spelled out in there. And that's what we're following and actually we are suspending that. So we don't have no rules. It's up to you, Mr. Speaker. Yeah, so supporting it. That's what we copied from Frida. We sat down and they, they agenda that I've pitched, it's all from your rules. Oh, peace, you're all, you were there a committee much enough. And anyways, again, we suspended that because it's part of the rules. So it's up to you, Mr. Speaker.
All right, thank you. For organized Senator Stewart.
I understand, um, you know, Senator Goza had this feeling that the rules are totally suspended, but the motion was to suspend only Rule thirty-one. Now that's in clarification to the suspension of the rules. The motion was to waive, Mr. Speaker, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but you asked a, a, a motion to waive or to suspend the rules of Rule thirty-one. And the motion was given a second. And so right now, as we speak, thirty-one has been suspended. And so if, if you want Mr. Stewart to come to the front for, as a, as a proponent, then I think, you know, it's kind of up to you as the speaker to allow that. I would easily yield my time to make it easier. So naturally I'd yield my time to Mr. Marvin Stewart so he would be able to come up. I think the one, two, three call was given. And at this time, I'd be willing to give, give him my time to speak. So naturally, if there is any question or at least maybe give, uh, Mr. Stewart a chance to speak for the record.
All right, so after talking with Secretary of the House, I will allow, need you to allow Mr. Stewart to come up and give his reason for a proponent for this LR.
Okay, it's time I yield my time to Mr. Marvin Stewart.
Thank you. This, uh, mining legislation that they passed in the year of nineteen seventy-seven. I think, uh, at that time or a little later, forced ones, Detective Chairman, what a, White Chairman, okay? Andrew Herbert. Had that package and we didn't know what it was. So I was appointed to Natural Resources Director of Tribe at that time. So he told me to follow up on it and see what, what it is. And at that time, uh, Skartekin and there was a lot of, there was quite a few Crowes in inland studies. And we used to have meetings, uh, in the western part of the United States, Denver, Spokane, Boise, Turkey. A lot of tribes were involved in that. And eventually, uh, it was cut down to the Hoagie, the Navajo, and Cheyenne and Crow Petrobras. But only we established that office. Then we had people partying there and Ellis moved us, wouldn't it? People that were, um, talking out too at that time. And during that passage of that act, I think that, uh, they gave Congress eighteen months to come up. they gave Congress eighteen months to come up how to handle the tribes at that time. After they established that for the states, they were supposed to come up with that, at that certain time, and they never did. So what they done was kind of allowed training and all that to eventually get to that point. I remember I, uh, when my uncle Don Swidg, the chairman, I, I went down to the Nabo to check, uh, how their progress was. And as you know, they have, they want Supreme Court. But they still, they still never got permission to do this transition. And I went to all their offices, from secretary to the director, and everybody else that worked on there, including the fighters. They were all degreed people. But for some reason or another, either a state or people in Congress didn't want to give this sort of threat. It was taking us long, nineteen seventy-seven. And they keep pushing it a little further. And then finally, you know, one of the things that was in that act was that if there's any coal mining, there'll be thirty-five cents a ton tax by the government. And half of that would need to go to the state where they had to mine, mining, or to the tribes that own the coal. And we used to kind of keep that going that way. From that, we just piled up. Finally, I think it was a couple of years ago, when a new senator in Wyoming were elected, they wanted all their money back. In fact, there was a lot of mining in that state, Wyoming. And they wanted all their money back. And I think at that time, it was three hundred, five hundred million. That money that they got. And they wanted it all. The next congressional meetings that they had, they wanted all of that. And at that time, OSM said that the law as written, you can't take it all. But they argued finally, uh, the word, at that time, I think that they used to send us from Northmoreland to the Pro Tribe. Monthly produce and all that. And we knew from that how much money that thirty-five cents a ton. How much money the coal had. But we didn't really know it. So what Andrew done was, he thought it worked at the DIA. So we started from day one, when they started mining. And, uh, got all those monthly production reports. And we found out that that silo hole there, that barn where they store coal, I think it's fifty thousand tons, probably, some of you guys worked there, know. That initial fifty thousand tons was never on the books. So one Doney, Dron, foreign Dron, was working in minerals and taking lessons up in the MMS halls in Denver. We told them about that. And that's when they had them pay, I forgot what it was, the money back to the tribe. But I don't know who gets that monthly production of the pride now. Whether the pride gets it, the DIA probably shouldn't have it. But part of it's going to be the pride. But anyway, what OSM finally figured out was, a couple of years ago, this is, from today, whatever's in the account will be given out amount divided by seven years to, to the tribe of the states. So that's when they, instead of just getting enough money to continue our office and studying and trying to learn all that, that they gave us two million, whatever it was, I think, uh, uh, what I think it was only one hundred and fourteen thousand. The AML, abandoned mine lands. A lot more. And then they gave the tribe quite a bit. And some was used for education, culture, blood, or if somebody has any problem, community service they call. And they were going to do that until we got down to even. And then they'll go from yearly, whatever it is there. So what, that's, uh, one of the things that came up. And all this time, that, uh, in Aboh, have people in lobbyists in Washington, and they have a lot of money. But they still can't beat that one. I don't know why, somebody's against it. Probably, uh, some of the people in Congress in the states, something like that. Everything else we do, the states always against us. And we're still kind of fighting that. And just to talk a little bit about, remember when Redro, getting money from the Redro and they stopped that? This is, this is a side point. My grandson got a notice that the crossing, that he had a sheer siding, he's going to have to reapply for that basic sum. To me, that's wrong. And all these, all the coal that they want to mine is supposed to go to the far east, China and Japan and all those people. And all these people from Billings, which they don't want, and they're contesting that, they're polluting the Redro, all the coal. And they're really reasoning heck about it. But they're going through, through our place here. I don't know how many times today, they're polluting the heck out of us too, here. And you can't do nothing about it, yes. But anyway, you know, it's following the force that. The law is there, but they do things to hinder us from making that happen. And these are things that were working with legislators. You probably have some stuff that came in here that we've got to get past. Eventually, somebody finally say, you manage it yourself. One of the other things that I get mad over is that. Where our boundary is, North boundary, and this Westmoreland's on the other side, north of that boundary. And we leased all the coal up at one time in the past, ten cents a ton. And we were digging so many acres, thirty thousand acres, forty thousand acres. And look where they and Rigor over there, uh, Westmoreland, got that. And then they sold for Westmoreland. Always still arguing whether coal was black or white or pink. They start building their drag lines and all that stuff. And they shipped the earth load up, and I think alive, seventy-four. At that time, I did pass standards, Chairman. Now, working at DIA, when the Pro Tribe designated me a delegate. And they passed a regulation to raise the, the price of coal that would come to us. So we renegotiated. And they said they already sold some seventy million tons. So they'll keep that at six percent of the price of coal. And anything over that would be eight percent. And then we passed the severance tax. After the state passed their thirty percent severance tax, they said, well, this is off the reservation so that it'll go to the state. Well, we keep arguing over the point. And passed one ourselves, twenty-five percent of the price of coal. And, uh, the secretary of research here wouldn't pass it. Obviously, I will not pass anything on the CD. Well, while I was at DIA, I had done a lot of research, Chairman. There's a fifty-eight that restored that to Midtown, the old site. Right in the statute books, I used to go page by page to see what was concerning Pro Tribe. Anything that was concerning, concerning Pro Tribe, I'd write it down in debit sheet. And I would check around and copy that. Anyway, I says, we got to argue that case because there's still a reservation. And what the tribe done was, they used the Indian minerals development. I think they went to port three times. Spent a lot of money, but finally won. But anything you do, they ain't coming on the reservation on this side. The state inspectors want to come on this side. And OSM is pushing to have them do that. And I don't think the state has any business being on this side of that. Even though I said it's on the other side too. That's in the past, but we still can do something. It seems like every time we turn around, they're always taking advantage of us. And, uh, I guess, in a sense, I was kind of raised with this office service. I felt it was still a thing to follow up on and within this part. And, uh, we still got to use the federal people with their trainings and all that. I went to a lot of training, even go to the mine and drive through the mine. Let's take that tester for about eight hours in the gas car. And they done everything that, one guy that worked there, done everything to keep me from passing what I passed. And it was kind of simple in a sense. You look at the, in the video there, and click, you're supposed to type on this side with profit, this. And then after you go through that section, I'll say, I do a tester, multiple choice, A, B, C, D. And I looked at that and I had people, I had legal pad, so I kind of write down. I started looking at that. First, first question was A. I said A, and the next question, I said C, and he said, the answer is B, and C. And I started writing that down. I started figuring out how, how they were doing. They were going A, B, C, D for a while, and then they'll go A, C, like that. And then they'll go A, D. And I kind of looked at that pride and I passed that thing. And I was given a license. Then, but I told them every time it showed that mistake, even some of them, no, it's right. The answer would say, that's wrong. So I get that lady that handled the thing for the committee, I tell her, look at this. This Orville Gustafson that used to come over, spent half his time over here. He was trying to flunk me, but he ain't going to do it. And I show up with everything that was wrong, I did it, see it, prove. Took me quite a bit of time, but I passed it. But they do everything. Even, uh, trying to get the money for the next year. It says, there were eight, eight guys working in that office. And at the end of that year, the money that they gave us, they said, we're only going on one tree. And I said, why? Well, what happened was Ellis, Ellis kind of made a mistake. He bought a, uh, one of these, uh, Mac computers, one of those word processors that cost a lot of money, ten thousand, I think. And then the secretary and Ellis went to college here, learn how to use that. When they came back, they couldn't operate it. And I wanted to get about four or five computers that would cost less than that. Anyway, I finally got the guy that, that installed it from Billings. And he says, the disk is gone that starts that first thing. Then I started reading the books and finally started making reports and this and that. And I started showing those five thousand dollars. And, uh, the class now, I'll say, by using particular words. Marvin Stewart done this report. Ellis North done this report. Kenneth, my brother, Kenneth, they said, said he made this report. And the other guys, their reports were from the same people. They figured that out using certain words. So they wanted to, they go tell the five people off. So we had to go to Washington, Ted Hogan, the secretary, and he knew us. It was some assistant director. Christmas Eve, we met with him. And he was able to, through the army buddy of his, to give us the nine people that were there. So we had to keep fighting like that all the time. But anyway, I was kind of keep tab, uh, trying to get A.J. when he was in there. These other guys, I've got, uh, in Oxford, it's a nice looking young boy there that's, uh, that's in schooling class. And I told my superiors, you know, you're doing old mining and stuff like that. Learn these things. Meantime, you got a little time, fun, talk to him, school you. So that's to learn and be a professional. But anyway, I try to help with as much as I can. But I just don't want to take too much time here. But, um, I just want you to know that. It might be quite hard, however, get the promise. I'll do it, uh, some delay or something.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Stewart. We have waived, uh, or suspended Rule 31. So we don't follow the protocol, the normal protocol at this time. So at this time, it's up to the Speaker to call for what we, what I think is to keep us in order. So at this time, I'll open the floor up for any questions for Mr. Stewart. After we go through the questions for Mr. Stewart, then I will call for a final roll call vote on his confirmation. Does anyone have any questions? Going once. Any questions? Going twice. If there are no questions, we will move on to final roll call vote on confirmation of Mr. Stewart. At this time, we will go with, start with Mr. Tuligas Black Lodge.
Tuligas Black Lodge, yes.
Pretty Pink Black Lodge, yes.
Stewart Black Lodge, yes.
I have one, Reno, yes.
Notifred, Austin Jacobson, yes.
Martin Black, yes.
DeKane, yes.
Who's the head, no?
Five Zero, yes.
Wilbur Malifian, yes.
Black Moon, yes.
Goldrow, yes.
Shane, yes. Shane, yes. With a vote of fourteen, yes. One, no, and zero abstaining, Mr. Stewart has been confirmed by let's say branch L R. Organize Senator Stewart.
Hello, Speaker, Secretary, members of the body. I just wanted to thank everybody for moving forward with this confirmation. I know it's, I know it's one of many, and just to let, let the body know, we did get word from some of our friends in D C, and they're waiting for this privacy legislation to get before them. And they've already pretty much said, we're going to move forward with this with the pro-tribe, so it's good. The hall.
Thank you. With that, we move on to announcements. Any announcements? Organize Senator Stewart.
I want to make an announcement here, I put it on my calendar. We do have a Westmoreland negotiation meeting. It's an all-day meeting, meet at nine o'clock at the main advocate building. It's, it's for negotiation purposes, and the natural resources committee is invited. And Natch will be at the Spring Creek Bar and Lounge. And the fourth, we're having a natural resources meeting at nine thirty here in the chambers. And it's going to be, it's going to be a pre-meeting to the, to negotiation meeting. So at that time, coal miners are invited to attend, give us their input, insight, thoughts. And the executive officials will be here, will be moving forward with our strategies and different things about how we want to kind of get what we want for the coal people implemented. There's an employment addendum that hasn't been defined, I don't know why. For you, for those of you that have been in attendance to the last meeting, we talked about having the, the, um, what is it, the Workforce Protection Act, and at that time, right now, that's, that's to be determined. So there's some, there's some, um, there's going to be a meeting, closed meeting here on Monday, just membership only. And so, just to let you know, and on the twelfth, location hasn't been determined yet, twelfth and thirteenth, we're going to have, uh, uh, the Clock Peak kickoff meeting pertaining to the educational monies, the hunting. And I forgot, I forgot the email here, I'll have it sent out and get it printed out for everyone. But, um, that's coming up. And I just got another email from Peyton Batliner, and I wanted to thank Senator Woo's head, and Speaker Shane, and Jay and Woo's attendance at that meeting, I wasn't able to attend, but Peyton's coming back for the fifth, through the seventh, and so he's asking to, to come over here again, one of them days. So whatever day we choose, but that's the day he'll be here. So just to let you know, that's, that's what's coming up on the agenda.
All right, so for next, Monday, nine thirty here, natural resources committee meeting, and then Tuesday at nine o'clock, they will start right at nine at the mine, so eight o'clock, I guess, we try to get whoever needs to ride, I believe. If anyone needs to ride, we'll have both vehicles here, so everybody can jump up in the
That's Tuesday?
Tuesday. We try to leave here by about eight. One more thing, Speaker, and I have another second, Stewart.
Um, Friday of next week, we have to move the meeting that was scheduled actually for yesterday. We have to move the meeting to next Friday, and it's going to be an update for Clay Gregory and Ty Stetson to show up from the water department, we're going to get moving, get updated, and get moving on that. And that's been a priority that the executive branch has given to Clay Gregory to come to the committee. And I work directly with myself and infrastructure, and we're going to be getting an update, and then we're going to start getting the nuts and bolts of this whole water code. So at that time, if you can, I believe that's a payday, so I was kind of hoping there will be that, get your input, all.
All right, so that's next Friday for the first initial meeting, we'll get into the water code. Also, Wednesdays, I believe Chairman of the Enrollment Committee is designated every Wednesday as enrollment committee meetings for that day. So that'll be Wednesdays at ten, I believe, my friend's been asking for. Uh, any, any other committee meetings scheduled for next week? Okay. All right, any more announcements? I, I'd just like to make one announcement, uh, for any more, um, nominations for confirmation, that we could get a committee meeting first, then we don't have to go through and suspend rule thirty-one, it kind of gets us off course, so just give me a heads up to everyone.
Should come to be first, but I never got it, obviously, it's new.
Just requesting, you know, committee chairs. With that, any more announcements? If not, calling for motion to adjourn. Organize Senator covers up. Morgan to adjourn. The motion to adjourn, seconded by Senator Stewart. All those in favor, say aye. All right. Is our adjourned?